Good evening, welcome to September 9, 2014, work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck, I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome your views and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For the television audience, I'd like to present you with Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Thank you gentlemen. Our first item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards and Certificate. First up is Commissioner Fraley, a retirement commendation for Major James S. Steve Skipper. Commissioner Fraley is approaching the podium.
Major Skipper, all friends, family, colleagues, please come up. While the rest of his family, friends are coming up, I'll go ahead and read this commendation for Major James S. Steve Skipper. Whereas EMS Major James S. Steve Skipper is retiring from Gaston County Emergency Medical Services, GMS, with thirty years of service, and whereas Steve first began serving as EMS in 1972 as a volunteer with Gaston Life Savings Crew, and whereas Steve began his EMS career with Gaston County Medical Transport, the predecessor of GMS, on January 30, 1985, and has served continuously since that time, and whereas through his knowledge and abilities, Steve progressed through the ranks, serving as an EMT, becoming one of the first of a group of seven paramedics in Gaston County in 1987, as an operations supervisor, and most recently as the major in charge of quality improvement. And whereas over these years, Steve has been instrumental in operations and progression of EMS in Gaston County, and whereas during his long career, Steve has shown deep devotion and dedication in his performance of his duties in the service of the residents and the visitors of Gaston County. Now therefore be it resolved that Gaston County Board of Commissioners wishes to express their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of EMS Major James S. Steve Skipper, and wishes him the best in his retirement, to be adopted the 23rd day of September 2014.
Congratulations, thank you for your service. We made a plaque for Steve in honor of his thirty years of service, that includes the commendation resolution on it, and we'd like to present that to him. And we also have the Cardinal Award from the state of North Carolina from Governor Pat McCrory. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for recognizing me and my service with thirty years. I'd like to thank my wife, Martha, all my family, my five grandchildren, I'm very proud of. EMS is a special service, I know not everybody can do this. It's good to go into work every day and not really go to work. You go to work for something you love. That's been the last thirty years of my life, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank Commissioners, thank Mr. Lamphier, Mr. Waldrop, Clyde Contrail, all the EMS people in GMS. I appreciate the opportunity and I won't be a stranger, thank you.
Our next item is a commendation for Gaston College 50th Anniversary. Commissioner Keeger was originally slated to give the commendation. He is not here tonight due to a medical procedure, Sir Commissioner Carpenter, thank you.
Thank you, and I see several college trustees, and the President, and a couple of employees, if y'all would join me. It's my pleasure to present this to the Gaston College on their 50th Anniversary. I go a long way back, not quite, I remember when it was not Gaston College, we had Gaston Tech down at the old Firestone Village, which my brother graduated from, but it was later brought in to Gaston College. And before I make any, got a little bit of ring here, before I make the presentation, I want to make a statement so that anybody watching thinks that they're immune from the ultraviolet rays of the sun, just take a look, because that's about the tenth procedure I've had over recent years. You don't think about it when you're out in the sun, but we have some good training programs over at Gaston College, and they train a lot of good nurses and assistant doctors. But let me present this, and Dr. Skinner is President of the College, and I happen to be on the Board, I was on there twelve years, and I helped to hire her and bring her to Gaston County, and she's done a wonderful job for us. Since whereas in 2014 Gaston College is celebrating fifty years of excellence as an institution of higher education in Dallas, North Carolina, and whereas after being granted a charter in 1963 by the state of North Carolina, Gaston College opened with a single campus and has since expanded to three campuses and one regional training center. Today Gaston, the college serves approximately 22,000 students each year through two, through more than a hundred programs, leading to degrees, diplomas and certificates. And whereas Gaston College is part of North Carolina Community College, the ninth largest of fifty-eight community colleges in the system, and is accredited, excuse me, by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. And whereas Gaston College continues to be an open-door public community college that promotes students' success and lifelong learning through high caliber, affordable and comprehensive educational programs and services responding to the economic and workforce development needs, and whereas Gaston College continually adopts, adapts, excuse me, to the needs of its students by offering courses in four curriculum areas. One, arts and science, two, health education, three, business information technology, and four, engineering and industrial technology. The college also serves economic and workforce development needs in six areas. Corporate education, bioeducation, small business, life skills, community education and public safety. And whereas through the dedicates of growth Gaston College reputation for academic excellence and comprehensive educational programs and services have empowered people to set and achieve high standards of quality, creative skills, lifelong learners, and supporting activities, learning centers, environments that offer real-life educational experiences. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners congratulates Gaston College on its golden anniversary and its contribution to the community and the surrounding area by providing tools to ensure excellence in education, to be adopted the 23rd day of September 2014. Let me present this to our fine President, Dr. Pat Skinner, and would you have a few words to say?
Sure, I'm happy to. First, I have two of my Board members here that I'd like to introduce, James Smith, who is the Chair of our Board, and Steve Campbell, who has been on our Board a number of years and very supportive of college, and I have quite a number of our faculty and staff behind me, and they are the ones who provide the quality instruction and make Gaston College what it is. I do want to thank our Commissioners, current Commissioners and past Commissioners, for the support you've given Gaston College over the years. We would not have the facilities we have today if it was not for your support, so we thank you for that. Our legislators are very important to us for the state budget, and I thank all of our former and current legislators for their support, and all those who've served on our trustees, as volunteers, on our foundation board over the years. And we're very fortunate, we have a lot of community leaders who have contributed greatly to the college. If you go around our campus and you see the names on our buildings, those are people that have contributed either their own time or their resources, that people like the Kimbrels, the Rousches, the Morrisas, the Piersons, the Albrites, the Beams, Robinson, Comer, Craig, Farr, Delpys and Dalton, have all contributed substantially to Gaston College over the years. Also, this is a time for us to recognize our alumni, we have many, many alumni, thousands out there who have received an education, and we have several here that are Commissioners that we're very proud of. Tracy Philbeck is one of our alumni, Jason Williams, and Chad Brown, among many others. Our own Board Chair is one of our alumni as well. We're going to be having a lot of special events this year, starting with kickoff on September 26, a free barbecue and concert for the first 500 people, and we're going to be featuring one of our own alumni from Bessemer City, Jimmy Wayne, is going to be speaking to our students and then performing a concert that evening. We're also going to have a first distinguished alumnus recognition this year at the end of the year at our graduation. Leonard Hamilton, who was graduate of Gaston College, basketball coach at Florida State, will be coming back to receive that recognition. We have a celebration committee, and I want to recognize John and Dr. Melinda Lowry, community leaders, two of our very successful alumni, and they are leading a campaign this year to help us with celebrating our 50th Anniversary. So be looking for other events that we will be having during the year. One other thing we're very proud of, we're doing a 50 for 50 project, which is we're asking our faculty and staff to give 50 hours of community service in honor of the community's support that we've received at Gaston College from our communities. So again, thank you very much for this recognition and for your past support as well as the future support, thank you.
You know, we have one of the first graduates from Gaston College, and I think it's appropriate that he's serving as Chairman of our Board this time, Jim, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for the role you played in bringing Dr. Skinner to our college. I think it's one of the best things you've done for Gaston County. Let me just say again, thank you to the Board, to the Commissioners, to the citizens of Gaston County and to Lincoln County for the tremendous support that you have given to the college over these years. It's most appreciated and we thank you.
Dr. Skinner, can I get Mr. Christmas 50 Hours program to me? I got some community service he can take care of too.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, our next commendation is Commissioner Williams, he has two, and he's coming to the podium now. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Saleem Merchant. If you and anybody wants to join you up here at the podium, feel free to do so. As the Chairman said, Commissioner Keeger was unable to be here to do this for Mr. Merchant, so we selected the best dressed Commissioner to do this on his behalf, so I appreciate you guys picking me, which was the obvious choice. Whereas on August the 9th, 2014, Merchant, a local menswear clothing store, celebrated its 40th year in business, and whereas Mr. Saleem Merchant, owner and local entrepreneur, left his native country of Pakistan in 1970 for the United States, he traveled to New York, Texas and California before deciding to relocate to Washington DC to study business at Strayer University. And whereas he opened a clothing store in Baltimore, Maryland, but soon decided that more opportunities and potential awaited him in the South. And I'll just stop right here and say, for anybody listening, there's always more potential and opportunities down South, so if you're paying attention. In 1974, he moved to Gastonia, North Carolina, and opened a clothing store in what was then the Gaston Mall, and whereas in 1977, he relocated his clothing store to the newly constructed Eastridge Mall, where he quickly built a local following. Merchant remains a staple of that establishment to this day, and whereas Mr. Merchant decided early on that his clothing inventory must be unique and must adapt to the demands of the times. Over the decades, Mr. Merchant embraced change and tailored his store's inventory to the demands of his customers. And whereas Mr. Merchant is a strong advocate of hard work and education, and he believes his success is an intensely competitive industry demonstrates that the American dream is indeed alive and well. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners recognizes and celebrates the 40th Anniversary of Merchant, and commands Mr. Saleem Merchant for his courage, his determination in fulfilling his goals and dreams, and for his commitment to serving the citizens of Gaston County. Furthermore, the County Commission wishes him continued success in his future endeavors. Our friend, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it, it'll take a few minutes?
Yeah. First and foremost, I would like to thank to Gaston County Board of Commissioners. It has been long forty years, but it has been very gratifying forty years. I could not have been made this long without support of great community, which has been behind me since day one. My family and I are so appreciative to the people and everything you all have done for us. It is truly a blessing from God. All I can say is, thank you. And it's a great, great pleasure to be here, and I really appreciate Commissioners to honor me with this reward. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
All right, Ms. Glenda Rogers, if you have anybody else with you that wants to join you up here? Okay, that's fine, me and you. All right. How are you? Good to see you. Whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th Anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasions. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the Board proclaims the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2014, as Constitution Week, and urges its citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, to be adopted the 23rd day of September 2014. I'm going to give this to you, Ms. Rogers, and you're representing the Daughters of the American Revolution?
Yes.
So thank you for coming, I'll give this to you if you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. On behalf of the Major William Chronicle Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I thank the Commissioners for this resolution, thank you very much.
Just for the record, air smiling was Commissioner Fraley, I almost fell out of his chair. Next up is Commissioner Price, who he will be giving a retirement commendation to Ms. Ann McGurk, and a proclamation to Lost Hollow, the Kimbrel's Children's Garden. Mr. Price?
Thank you. Ms. McGurk could not join us this evening, but I'm going to read her commendation, and we have a couple of members here from Department of Health and Human Services that will forward it to her. Whereas Ann McGurk began employment June 29, 1968, with the Gaston, 1988, excuse me, with the Gaston County Office as a Social Worker II Teen Placement, and whereas after working a number of years as an adolescent foster care social worker, Ms. McGurk was promoted to a Social Worker II on May the 10th, 1995. Whereas effective January 29, 1997, Ms. McGurk's job title was reclassified to a Social Work Supervisor III, the position she held at the time of her retirement, effective August 1, 2014. And whereas Mrs. McGurk's supervisor notes, Ann's years of dedication to this agency and this community have not gone unnoticed, she has impacted many people's lives, most specifically teens who have been involved in our department. She is wished the very best as she begins the next chapter in her life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses deepest appreciation to Ann McGurk for her significant services, contributions to Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services Social Services Divisions, its clients and its citizens of Gaston County. The Commission expresses its gratitude for her 26 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Gaston County and extends the best wishes to her for a healthy and rewarding retirement. This to be adopted the 23rd day of September 2014. Thank you. Would Ms. Kara Newport and anyone else in the garden like to join me at the podium? Good evening. Kara also has a presentation later this evening, but this is a commendation proclamation recognizing this Children's Garden. Whereas the Gaston County Board of Commissioners is pleased to join Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden in celebrating the opening of its newest attraction, Lost Hollow, the Kimbrel's Children's Garden, which takes place on October 18, 2014. And whereas Duke and Doc Kimbrel, two of Gaston County's greatest philanthropists, made a $2 million leadership gift, and whereas hundreds of others have made contributions to make Lost Hollow a reality. And whereas Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden is one of the region's greatest cultural treasures, originally established by Daniel J. Stowe in 1991, and sequentially opened in 1999, it has become one of the state's leading attractions. Whereas the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden has nearly 400 acres of land dedicated for the development of horticultural attractions, which has already include display gardens, a glass house with orchids and tropical plants, and 3.2 miles of hiking trails. Whereas the garden attracts 100,000 people annually, serving guests from all 50 states, including groups, gardening enthusiasts, schoolchildren and others. And whereas the Children's Garden is a new medieval themed expansion in which children of all ages are invited to explore the manicured gardens, old world architecture and sophisticated southern horticulture. With 14 destinations nestled in the heart of Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, Lost Hollow offers the young and the young at heart an opportunity to unlock the adventure of this truly one-of-a-kind garden. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims October 18, 2014 as Lost Hollow Day at Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, and encourage all citizens to join in this celebration and in recognizing the beautiful and educational environment that Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden provides this community. This to be adopted the 23rd day of September 2014.
Ms. Newport?
Thank you very much.
Here's your proclamation, and the mic is yours right now, she will be back up.
I will be back up for a presentation, but thank you to Mickey and to the Commissioners for this proclamation, and I'll be back in a few minutes to give you a further update about Lost Hollow in the garden, thanks.
Our next item is Certificates of Appreciation for Public Service. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills and energies in service as an appointee to one of our Boards or Commissions. This type of service is a foundation for citizen involvement in our county government, and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Terry Moore, Animal Control Task Force Advisory Board. Kim Price, Economic Development Commission. Steve Hall, Gaston County Board of Adjustments. Robert Kellogg, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Taylor Markantow, Transportation Advisory Board. Carolyn Haynes, Workforce Development Board. And one certificate of appreciation in memory of Howard T. Council on Aging, Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Board. Our next item is Citizen Recognition, and we have no one signed up. Our next item is a presentation, Lost Hollow, the Kimbrel's Children's Garden Presentation, Ms. Kara Newport from the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden Executive Director. Ms. Newport?
Is it coming up? There it is. Okay, I think everyone has this with them, and it's up on the screen now. It's with great pleasure that I'm here to talk to you today about Lost Hollow at the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. As many of you know the history of Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, it was opened to the public in 1999, and we have a 50-year master plan, so we're about 15 years into that, and we keep developing and growing, and so we are on to our next new development, and that is a Children's Garden. But to tell you a little bit about where we are, we've been growing steadily since our open. You can see on the chart in front of you that when we opened, we opened at a pretty strong pace, about 50,000 members, or 50,000 guests. And then we added holiday lights in about 2006, and then we opened the conservatory, and that really brought us to the next level. With the economic downturn, we actually were pretty stable, and so now we are ready for the next big bump, and the Children's Garden's really going to provide us that. So you can see that our projection is really heading upward, and one of our experiences, I'm on the National Board of the American Public Gardens Association, and Children's Gardens are one of the best returns on investment, and this $4.4 million project, $2 million from the Kimbrel, and $2.4 million raised from the community, is really going to bring us to that next level. Our attendance comes from all over, you can see that the majority of our attendance does- You can see that the majority of our attendance does come from the three-county region. Most of the people from Mecklenburg, just because Mecklenburg County is larger in size, but the rest of the counties in our region, York and Gaston, are pretty strong as well. But that leaves about thirty-eight percent of our guests coming from outside of the region, so by definition, we're a tourist destination. And you heard Mr. Commissioner Price present that a lot of our guests are coming there just to see the garden. So if you look at some of the state statistics, this statistic is provided by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, these illustrate the top attractions, the top reason people travel for overnight travel. And visiting relatives is typically number one, shopping is always at the top. But surprisingly, if you click to the, or turn to the next page, you'll see that gardens is a pretty high percent. So gardens are also a tourist destination. And then beyond that, if you see the highlighted sections, those are other reasons people might come to a garden. So they might come to a garden because we have bird watching. This summer, we had a great exhibit called Zim Sculpt, so we have art in our garden. So there are lots of reasons that we even add greater value as a tourist attraction. And then if you look, and this is maybe a little surprising, if you look at the next slide, that shows the rest, the remaining of the reasons people come. So gardens are even higher than zoos. People often think of zoos as attracting the most people, but gardens are really, a really strong attractor, and Lost Hollow allowing us to expand our audience is going to help us broaden that attraction base. Let's see where I go here. There we go. So now I'm going to tell you about Lost Hollow. It is, as Commissioner Price said, a medieval-themed garden. It's a pretty exciting place, and beginning October eighteenth, you're going to unlock the adventure. We're in construction right now, and one of the really neat things that was provided to us is some artifacts from Dan Stowe's estate, so you'll be able to see that. We're going to be opening the entire garden when we open on October eighteenth, but we're installing about eight destinations, eight different things for children and people to see. And then the remainder of those will be completed in a second phase of the project, which is a two-point-two million-dollar phase. And so I'm going to walk through some of those destinations that are in the first phase. These chimney pots were, they're antique Italianate chimney pots that were on the roof of Dan Stowe's house. So some of you may have actually seen them there. But they've been moved and relocated to the garden, that's his legacy, and so we wanted to have them there, and turned into these beautiful planters, but they have this really wonderful old-world feel. And so this is an area we call the Commons, it's kind of the entry gathering place to bring everyone together. And there in the middle of the gathering place is the All-Seeing Eye. And throughout times, the All-Seeing Eye is a protection symbol, so lots of different people use the All-Seeing Eye, it's on our dollar bill, so that is, that's a really important reference, that it protects all people who cross over it and welcomes them into this garden. And the centerpiece is a moonkeep. So if you've seen a castle, the moonkeep, the keep, is typically the tower on the corner. And so this should be really inspirational to kids so that they can, they can go in there and overlook the whole land. The area that we put this is right, if you're familiar with the garden, it's right in the center of the garden, to the right, and it's truly a hollow. That's part of the reason we named it Lost Hollow. So they can stand at this high point and see down into the garden and survey the land that seems very immense. It's a three-acre garden, but it feels like seven or eight acres because it's surrounded by wood, so it's a really beautiful experience for them. And then this actually illustrates two things. You can see the amphitheater in the background and a circular curved stage that will jut over a pond. And in the pond is really our only reference to a castle. At the bottom of the pond, you can see one to the right coming up, there are ruins of an old castle that will be able to be seen in the pond. So this is the kind of thing that instead of telling a story to children about a specific thing or expecting them to learn one thing, we're giving them hints and pieces that they can dive into and see, oh, what is that? What is that in the pond? Where did that come from? Why is it there? And we just had our first children in yesterday in the garden, and they make up their own stories, and any of you around children know that they're going to make up their own story to go along with this. One of the additions that we added later in the project is we added a metalworker from North Carolina who specializes in old-fashioned metalwork, and she has designed the balconyette, which is made of iron, and you can see it's a beautiful ironwork, it's very meticulously crafted. Our whole garden was designed by W. Gary Smith, and he is an artist and designer, so the whole piece has a lot of garden artistry. This is one of the specific ways that that plays out. And another artifact that we gained from Dan Stowe's house is this cave. It looks a little bit like a fireplace, right? And so you have a fireplace surround that's about five feet tall, and it invites you in, and we have something really special and exciting that's inside of it, and we're not going to tell you what that is right now. You're going to have to come and see what's inside of the cave. So we hope that you all do and all of the guests in Gaston County come out to see it. One of the reasons we added this is that we saw a number of families with young children increasing at the garden, and we think that that's a change in pattern, not only in our region, but in Gaston County. And so we wanted to be there to service more families with young children and schoolchildren specifically. So already, we're servicing about eight thousand, it's actually ten thousand, including chaperones, students and chaperones that come in for our school programs from the region, and we really want that number. I hope that that number is able to triple over time. And quite frankly, we didn't have the resources in place physically to allow us to have children, and that sounds funny because we have lots of land, but we didn't have things that they could interact with. And so this presents us a platform to allow us to grow our education and curriculum-based programs as well. So we really hope that that's going to grow exponentially. The other thing that, I don't know if you've heard of The Last Child in the Woods, written by Richard Louv, but we really want to use nature as a basis of learning and inspiration, and there are studies that show that children learn better when they're in a natural environment than they do in a classroom environment. That's not true for all kids, kid people learn differently, kids learn differently, but we want to provide them with an alternative learning experience from the classroom. And so Lost Hollow is going to allow us to do that. Phase two is going to delve more deeply into the educational experience. Right now, our focus is K through six, with an expansion of pre-K programs that are coming online with the opening of Lost Hollow. Phase two fundraising, we're going to dedicate to raising money for middle-school programs. Middle schoolers are tough, so we're going to try to dedicate some programming investment to come up with curriculum that'll be really compelling to them and really interesting to them to encourage middle-school students to come out and learn more at the gardens. We're also adding key resources for schools in the second phase, including the necessaries, which is our name for the restroom facilities, and an education pavilion. So those are some of the components that are part of phase two. We're also going to be adding more interactive plant displays. The pond will be in place, but we need to add a pond ecosystem in the planting, and we're going to add a spring display in the woods. This is a hollow nestled in, nestled in a wood line, not a native stand, but an older growth wood line. So that's going to allow us to have shade, which is pretty exciting, but also to have some woodland plant. So this is first and foremost a garden. While it's a children's garden, you didn't see a lot of play features. This is authentic, it's real, it's going to be a beautiful garden, adults will love it as much as kids. So it expands our collection of plants and invites all people to come in, people of all ages to come in and enjoy it. The additional destinations that are in phase two are the Cruck Frame Cottage, which is really a treehouse designed after old English houses; the Fountain Ruin, which will be an interactive fountain; a Throne Room, which is stone thrones out nestled in the woods; Walnut Ring is one of Dan's artifacts, it's an old English phone booth. So that's really ancient in a lot of kids' minds, they've never seen a phone booth before and don't know what it does, so that'll be fun. And then Ramble Rocks is just what it sounds like. We want kids to get out and play in nature, that's really important. So that concludes my presentation, and what we hope today is that the Commissioners will support us in this project and help to advocate for the garden's growth and development as we add these new features. So we appreciate, we appreciate your support and representation, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we appreciate you coming tonight. My wife and I are looking forward to coming to the reception, I think on the seventeenth of October.
Right.
So we're really excited about this, it looks really cool. We've got four kids, so we're excited about getting them out there. And yeah, we're pretty excited about that. The question I had is, I was looking through the handout that you had, and you talked about the number of people that come to Gaston County. Do you guys have maybe an idea how many hotel rooms that generates over the course of a year? And is there any way to kind of?
It's a complex and difficult question, and we've looked at that many ways. I served on Travel and Tourism Board a number of years ago, and the hotels aren't able to track that very well. So, and a lot of times it's up to them. What we do know is that one of our, one of our large percent of attendance comes from private events, which is our rentals program, which is our wedding program, and that is a number that we are able to track a little bit more closely. One of the numbers that we think is higher than is reported is that we have a lot of people who come for our holiday program and do stay overnight. And during the economic downturn, we did have a lot of anecdotal reports of people reporting that they were coming to the garden as a destination and staying in the hotels in Belmont and Gaston County. And so anecdotally, we have a lot of information, but we're not able to get the information from the hotels specifically about why people are coming there. So it's hard to track in a specific sort of way. But we feel that when you look at tourism and tourism destinations, that the destinations are often, you have things that drive tourism, and then you have hotels that support tourism. And so we are driving tourism and providing tourists something to do, whether or not they're coming specifically even to see us. It's a reason to choose to stay in Gaston County, and we think that's very important, that they have a choice to stay in maybe several different locations, but they're going to pick Gaston County because they can go to the garden, and they can go to the Sheil, and they can go to Crowder's Mountain, and they can do all these great, wonderful outdoor things. And so it puts together a nice package, and Jim Hoffman has worked very closely with North Carolina and Charlotte Travel and Tourism in developing destination packages so that people will come for the lights program or for weekend travel. So we're working very hard to drive that tourist traffic and to, you know, to give our guests something to do while they're in Gaston County, to create packages for them, because we do already know that thirty-eight percent of them are coming from outside of the three-county region. So it's one of these things, it's a constant learning, I guess, and we're working like everyone else to try to better collect that data.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, I just, I think my mic's going off. I just want to say something about how important gardens are. I've been able to travel quite a bit in St. Louis, I went to their gardens in Denver. I went to the gardens in Bermuda. Your predecessor was there before he came and worked for, Mike Bush did.
Right, right.
And I've been to Buschard Gardens in England.
Thank you.
And did I say Kew Gardens?
Kew Gardens, right.
Buschard's in Victoria, I've been there. But it's so important when you're traveling to have, you know, features like that to attend, and I know a lot of people are coming to Gaston County just because Daniel Stowe and his family saw this was a great thing to do for people. So thank you for what's going on down there.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Newport.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Children and Family Services caseload review. Ms. Sarah Norris, DHHS CNS Service Administrator. Ms. Norris?
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Sarah Norris, I am over our Children and Family Service area, so we are the section at DHHS that deals with our child abuse cases. A few months ago, at one of our DHHS board meetings, some questions came up from our board members related to caseload standards and our current caseload sizes here in Gaston County. And some questions were discussed regarding what a caseload size means, because currently our social workers are experiencing high caseload standards, or above what is recommended by the state. So when we were talking about that and looking at the specified caseloads and comparing to what is recommended from the state, some of the board members wanted to see some qualitative or quantitative data as best that we could. So we were able to pull some numbers. So you all have a handout in front of you that is a pull from around March and April of this year. We pulled some data and were able to kind of look at what our, how many minutes our social workers are spending on cases. Our typical disciplines that we have are divided into three areas, and you'll see them there on that handout. Our family assessors or investigative assessors, and then our in-home, and then our foster care. So when you look at the handout there, you'll see the different case decisions that we can make related to a case when we first have the case in our, in-hand, and then you'll see how many minutes are spent specifically on those different case decisions. It's fairly self-explanatory, so I would encourage you to take some time if you want to be able to look over this more closely. But basically, what we're able to determine is what's recommended from the state for both our assessors and our in-home caseworkers is an average caseload of ten families. Currently, our staff are at about a twelve, they're getting twelve cases per month, which is above what's recommended from the standard. With our foster care cases, that goes by the child versus the family, and it's recommended that they carry fifteen kids on their caseload. We're above standard in that area as well. We have anywhere from fifteen up to eighteen children on each of our workers' caseloads. If you look at the chart at the bottom, that line that's going across there, that's there at the forty-hour work week. If they were working forty hours, that's where it would stop. But you can see with each of these different disciplines, they're working over that amount of time. And of course, our social workers know that this is not an eight-to-five job, they know that they're going to be required to work more than that forty hours, but it's definitely much higher than we hope on a steady, a steady line. You can see that with the different case decisions, with the family assessments, that some of those types of decisions, you're going to spend a whole lot more time with the family based on their needs, and this is based on what they find when they get out there, what kind of needs the family presents, what type of services we need to connect them to. And the more complex the situation, the more time they're going to be spending with that family. With our in-home cases, those are the ones that we determine that there is some sort of concern or risk that we need to continue to follow that family until that risk is reduced. So they're spending quality time with those families beyond just assessing. And then of course, our foster care cases are children that we've had to, we've had to talk with our judges to file a petition and have them give us non-secure custody in order to remove them from that situation or to get our court system involved because the risk was so high. And so our social workers are working extremely hard to protect the children of this county, and they are working all hours of the night. We've had some staff that have even recently had to spend the night at our office with a child because we could not find a placement for that child. So they do the job that is thankless oftentimes, that we can't share the good stories that we're able to help with, with families because of our confidentiality rules and the protection of the privacy of those families. But they are individuals that you all should be very proud of, and I know you are, that work extremely hard to serve this community. And I hope that these numbers can give you all some further information beyond just hearing when caseload standards are above standard of what that actually means, rather than saying that they have twelve cases versus ten, which doesn't sound like a big discrepancy. But when you look at the amount of minutes that they're spending on a case, you're able to see how much time that specifically adds to their workload. And you've, the handout is two sides. One would be is if we were at standard, and then the other one is based on our current standard. This was run about a month ago. We've had some of our caseloads that have even increased since that, since this data was run. So, do you all have any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Price?
Ms. Norris, when it says a case is cycled through, does that mean it's actually over with within a month? Or is it a case, ongoing thing and necessarily lasts thirty days?
Typically with our family assessments and our investigative assessments, we're looking anywhere from thirty to forty-five days that we want. looking anywhere from 30 to 45 days that we want to be able to make a decision on that case, whether to close it out, because there's no concerns that we need to continue to stay involved, or that we want to move it on to one of the other disciplines because we need to stay involved. So, when we're saying cycle in, cycle out, they're getting around 10 to 12 cases a month, and then they're making a decision on 10 to 12 cases a month. So, you're working anywhere from, you know, 20 to 22 cases a month, based on the ones you're getting, along with the others you already have in hand that you're cycling out. And of course, it's not a perfect number, because not everything comes in on the first and is, is done by the 30th. They're, they come in consistently. So, it's the easiest way to try to explain the cycling in and out, if that makes sense.
Is, is the minutes reflective of the time it takes to write down what a caseworker does, or is the, are these minutes reflective of just the time they spent with the family and individuals? Or is it the, I guess every time you do something, you got to make a report and a file, but does that include that?
That's correct. It does. It's a combination of both field work, which would be work with the families, phone calls to different people, visits, travel time, as well as what they spend documenting what they've done. And they have to keep very detailed records, so that we have that on record if we need to, to pull it for the future. So, it's a combination of both pieces. And they, we have a system where they code their time, which is what I pulled this data from, to be able to determine how much time they spent with, on each family, both with their field work as well as time that they spent documenting what they did.
Thank you for coming this evening. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Norris, for coming tonight. One of the things I wanted to ask. When we look at these, how many people are generally in these areas for the services needed and not recommended? When we say 10 caseloads, how many actual employees do we have in this particular sector that are seeing these cases? Is this like a 60 caseload for six people, or how does that?
Currently, we have, in my entire area, we have 107 people, including myself and two coordinators, 16 supervisors. So, the rest of the individuals, 80, 80-plus individuals are divided amongst this area. We have around, don't quote me on this, but around 10 in-home workers, around 30 of the investigative assessors, and then the rest would be foster care. So, it's mainly FAIA or FA and investigators, and then our foster care staff would be the second largest group, and then our in-home staff. Plus, we have other staff. We've got adoption staff, intake staff, after-hours staff.
I guess my question after that is, I know you haven't been doing what you're doing now. You've been there a long time, but not in this particular field. In the last four years, would you say this has been a large increase that we, has overwhelmed us? Is this something that's manageable? And any recommendations that you make or give us to how we can see these better fit for you guys?
My recommendation would be twofold. One, if our, of course, you always hear pay. If our social workers had better pay, that could potentially help keep some of our staff that end up leaving, that go to surrounding counties where they're doing the same job, but they're making a little bit more money for the same, the same type of work. So, they're not changing fields. They're just going to another county because the money is better. So, that would be a consideration. The other consideration is, of course, availability for filling, creating more positions to be able to fill and manage, so that those caseloads can, can go down, which of course also takes money. We currently have some vacancies, and we're always interviewing to have them filled. But unfortunately, due to the, the difficulty in the job, the ability to keep people can sometimes become difficult, because at least they can go somewhere else where they may be able to receive a little bit higher pay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Norris, in your opinion, are we understaffed in these positions? Is that kind of what we're getting at with these caseloads?
Currently, we, we need more staff to handle the amount that we're getting in, yes.
Okay. Now, you're saying we need more positions, or we're not able to fill the open positions we've already allotted for?
I think it's a combination. I think if we could fill them, if we could be completely staffed, which I have not seen since I've been in this position, we always have a few vacancies, it would be easier to determine where we are. But that's, I think that at the end of the day, if we were able to fill them all, we would probably still see the potential need for staff to maybe do other things that, that are on that wish list, that we would love to be able to provide to our community, that we are right now having to do in a very innovative way, that if we had another position, we may be able to, to do a lot easier.
Gotcha. But to, to do the workload that we currently have and what's laid out here, if we had every position filled that we've already allotted for, you think that would ease the load quite a bit? And we're not, we're not talking about necessarily, you know, kind of moving aside the wish list, just to do this. If we could fill those positions and, and bring people in that are good and qualified to do the job, that would really lighten the load, I believe. Is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
It would definitely help lighten the load.
Okay. What are the potential problems we run into by having an understaffed agency?
Can you be more specific?
Well, I mean, so what's the downside, other than just maybe the, there's more time spent or more staff hours? What kind of problems could, could we face, or do you guys face? Just people slipping through the cracks? Is there a potential of maybe us not being able to, to reach somebody that needed help? Or what, what are we looking at?
When we're understaffed, I believe that we're having to, to require more of the staff that we have. So, we're leading to potential burnout of those staff and maybe piling on top of the ones that have already left, that may, others may leave, because then they've been left with, with what's behind. And of course, if you compare, if you had your ideal situation of full, of full staff, whatever that magic number might be, even if it's full-staffed or plus however many, and you can provide optimal service, anything below that, you're potentially looking at service may not, it may not be negative, it may not be bad, but it may not be as good as it could be were you to have a better, fuller staff, if that makes sense.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I have a couple. My questions are, what are the drivers for this increase? Until we address those issues, the number's going to continue to grow, and you're always going to need more and more people, which eventually will outpace what revenue that you can bring in. So, from your perspective, what is driving these numbers up? Number one. And number two, what do you recommend, or do you have any recommendations on how we approach those drivers?
That's a loaded question. So, as far as the drivers go, I'll give you some thoughts I have. It's probably not, would not be my full thought, and I'm sure I'll think of many more ideas when I leave here. I think that part of what the change has been is, what is required from the state has been different than maybe 10 years ago and then 20 years ago. So, the expectation is greater as far as what's required of our staff. So, what may have been able to be done on a case 10 years ago is taking longer because there's, there's more of an assessment. That's a negative in that sense, but it's a positive in the sense that we're, we're assessing the family more fully. So, there's, there's kind of the, the weighing there between those two. I think that in combination with the, the type of field that this is, it's a very high-stress job that is constantly weighing on the staff, that handling those emotions within themselves of what they're seeing is a factor.
Let me clarify my question. What I'm asking is, what is the driver of expanding the caseloads? In other words, alcoholism, dysfunctional families, what, what do you see out in Gaston County that's pushing these numbers up?
I think substance abuse is a factor that we're seeing more of. Mental health, concerns with both children and adults, looks very different now than it did years ago. Of course, domestic violence is something we're seeing, and probably some of our abuse cases, specifically sexual abuse, are being more reported maybe than they were years ago. I don't know that for a fact, but it, it potentially seems to be more of an awareness with some of those things, so people are, are stepping up and reporting.
Can you put together some recommendations for us, or maybe it's something you can work with your staff on maybe some next steps? I know that Commissioner Price is on your board, or do you have any recommendations on next steps?
Specific to?
How to meet this caseload. I, I understand better pay and you need to fill more positions, but do you have anything concrete? Or is this just the first step of recognizing a problem and then trying to address the issue?
I think we're consistently looking at ways that we can improve our practice to be able to, to help with this situation. I definitely think that it, we can continue to do that in, in a bigger picture, if that's something that you desire.
Yeah, I think, I think we should. Because when you have caseloads like this, you can only do so much, and you're going to have errors. And then you're going to read in the paper where we missed a child, or, you know, we failed to check on a child, or something of that nature. So, I do think we need some concrete recommendations to follow up on.
One of the things that we do have in place, that has been put in place within the last couple of months, is a quality assurance team. They're just formulated at this point. So, looking at some of the specific things that they're going to be able to help track and monitor and make recommendations related to training is something that we're already looking at. But we definitely can provide you with whatever specifics you'd like.
And probably the last question, I would like to get more specific on what are the drivers. When you talk about substance abuse, mental health, and things of that nature, I don't know if your board's done a survey, or something more reliable that can let us know what those drivers are. Because I think maybe if we can meet some of those issues, it will save us on the back end.
We can look into that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you all for listening.
Our next item is a transportation report, the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO. Commissioner Carpenter is the chairman of that board, and we also have Mr. Hank Graham, coordinator. Commissioner Carpenter.
Okay, Hank, will you join me? Pardon me. If my voice don't run out before my, local anesthesia on my ear there is starting to burn a little. This, I have been on the local MPO. It was the GUMPo Gaston Area, let's see, Gaston, no, wait. Gaston Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. I actually came on it in 1988, when I first served on the board, from there to '92, and have been involved again since 2000. But there's a, a little bit of history that I think that needs to be shared, because others have been identifying and, and stating the purpose of the Garden Parkway that is rather misleading and, in many cases, doesn't represent the facts. And so, I put together, along with Hank and his staff and some of our local staff people, a PowerPoint that goes back and catches the history of how this came about. And it's in the 1980s that the Gaston Urban Area Planning Organization talked about improving east-west mobility in the southern part of Gaston County. At that time, we realized that everybody in the southern part of the county was going north and south to go east and west. There was not a good, good route, and at that time, it didn't have anything to do with economic development. We just saw that people were having a very difficult time coming up South Point Road, New Oak Road, Union Roads, and those other roads to go east and west or back and forth. So, we, in the early 90s, we started with the urban, the GUMPo, I'm going to use that, Gaston Urban Area Metropolitan, I'm not going to use GUMPo, which is now the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO. So, we merged this past year with the other two counties because of the latest census. But in the early 90s, we held workshops throughout the county, and that was, we actually had, and I was part of that, we had five workshops and 13 public meetings. We called it at that time, the 321 US 74 bypass. And the idea was to catch 321 north of Dallas and come around the west side of Gastonia and go into Mecklenburg County, right there at 485 near the airport. So, that, we had quite a, quite a large group of people participating. We not only identified it, but we identified other roads that, in the county, that we felt like that needed to be improved. Where have we been? In 2000, the project received $500,000 in a request for $3 million for planning and design, and Representative Sue Myrick at that time was able to get some money designated to, to start, start planning for the project. Somewhere along the way, in about 2001, the bypass gained the name of the Garden Parkway in reference to the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, and then planning began. In 2005, the Garden Parkway was selected as a toll road candidate to help pay for the project. And the reason this occurred, at that time, our representatives in, in state government said that they just didn't have the money in the state highway fund to build it at that time. And so, we asked our representatives to see if we could get legislation to create the Turnpike Authority, and that was done. Our current mayor of Gastonia was in the legislature at that time, John Bridgman, and David Hoyle, and I forget the others. But they were able to get the Turnpike Authority established. And then, from 2006 to 2009, the design and studies prepared for potential routes. And the, the money was obtained through the legislature of $35 million a year for gap funding for 40 years to help pay for the gap between what tolls would provide and that, that road. I might add that we had a, another transportation committee, and my doctor said this would happen. Excuse me. A little bit of blood. The, where are we, Hank? Okay. The, the major Charlotte area road project pushed projects opening to 2005. The, the major Charlotte area road project pushed projects opening to 2015 to complete and environmental permitting and design was, was obtained. About this time, the, the timeline, the state DOT said that they couldn't spend the $35 million within that year and they were needing some additional fund for the Yadkin River Bridge up in, in Rowan County. And so, we agreed to relinquish $15 million of our money to help pay for that. And if you've been up that way, you see that was a good project. But the, part of the, part of the problem was, once we got the, the project moving and we got the record of decision, I think it was about like a 90-day time that someone can challenge that project. And there's a group from out of Atlanta, had no interest in Gaston County, but they are, I call them extreme environmentalists, file that about the last day of that, that time that it could be challenged and it has been currently held up. Had not that and some other people taking another view of the project, it would be, traffic would be traveling on it next year in 2015. But it was held up and interrupted. And the current status of it right now is waiting on that. Plus, the legislature went back and took the money, the $35 million a year out and it now stands into the formula of, some formulas that measures the amount of traffic and so forth that is currently involved to, to have it stacked up. Some people come along and said, "We need to widen I-85." And I don't disagree with that, but in the priority of things, if you would, if you would take some of the load off of 85, that approximately an hour of time it gets jammed up most evenings or sometimes in the morning, that would be pushed way out. Let's go to the next. With the Garden Parkway, there would be time and fuel savings to the citizen business and a reduction in, in daily traffic volumes on other roads and it opened up a corridor for business growth and expansion, also to the Norfolk Southern Intermodal Facility at the Charlotte Airport. Let's go to the next one, Hank. This is the, the route that has been selected for the Garden Parkway. And you can see that it, it goes completely through Gaston County from near the airport to west side of Gastonia on I-85. These are time savings and you might not be able to, to, to read that, but this particular one here, I think it's 20-some minutes to Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, that would save that much time. And just to get put in perspective, if you drive that much in city traffic, you're going to spend a gallon of gas. So, that's going to be $3.50 or so at today's, at today's cost. And there's other, and also back and forth both ways. So, you would actually save about two gallons of gas a day from that area. And the cost, the next one is from South Point Road, it would cost about $1.22. These are projected rates for 2016, but a dollar, $1.22. So, if it's going to cost you basically $3.50 for a gallon of gas and it's only going to be $1.22 for the other. Thank you. My doctor told me that I might have some of this. He told me if it got real bad, he'd call me. I got his cell phone. And this is another one. I'll say it again, people that stay out in the sun when you're young, just remember that you could have these issues when you get a little bit older. Because I was in the landscape business and lived outside quite a bit. But you can see the savings. Plus, if you're counting air quality, those are gallons of gas that's not going to be put into the, into the atmosphere. Okay? Reduction in traffic, I-85 approximately 122,000. That was, I think, oh, 12 figures. I understand that now it's 127,000 that cross the Catawba River coming in and out of Gaston County. And out the other end, there's about 44,000 that goes out. But part of those people enter within Gaston County and are going west. And I think we figured it is about 78,000 cars that are in the, in the Gaston County area that, that use I-85, not counting US-74. And this is a list of it. You can't see those, but these are, these are in your handout. These are numbers with each interchange. Go ahead, Hank. And we giving you the numbers that, of cars that exit at each one of the, they actually exit and enter each one of the exits in the county. Is a, go ahead. There's a few more. Those are the last couple. One in Belmont Abbey and another one's there at Belmont Mount Alley Crossing. And you ask, why would we need it in the southern end of the county? Well, right now, planned or in the, planned or either in the development stage, there's over 10,000 residents planned. This is the, one of the largest and that is at Stowe, Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. This is other property that he had that is being, going to be developed. The people are in the development stages of that and there's approximately, was 800 and some, almost 900 new residents there. And all of those people, without a, another river crossing, such as the Garden Parkway, it would, it just further aggravate the traffic on South Point, Union, New Hope Road and those others. This is another revealing, this is a projection on the growth and the darker red indicates where the growth is going to occur in what's got Gaston, Lincoln and Cleveland Counties. And you can see the southern end of the county is going to be really inundated with new growth. This is the, the intermodal facility at the airport that is already in operation and there's potential for, for use of the Garden Parkway or if we want to call it the east-west corridor, whatever. But if we don't have that river crossing, they're probably going to put their business activity in York or Chester's County or somewhere else. So, we have some opportunities for there. And let me, let me say one thing, that if you look at our tax rate and our cost to the citizen, one reason is our low value of property to provide the services that we talked about while ago, about the Department of Social Services and others. And so, the only way that we're going to grow out of this, this, this situation that we're in is to improve the capital investment within our county. And that's one way to do it. Some have discussed creating a Parkway project that builds just a portion of the full length, approximately nine miles, and it would stop at 274 near the Speedway, which would take most of the traffic it's causing the problem up there on 85 each evening with the overflow. And so, the proposal would be to construct the, the river crossings and this would be, produce a more manageable phase from construction and, and cashmatic perspective for the state to build that. And that's just another idea that somebody is, is throwing out. This is a total route and the next slide shows the route going to 274. And that is, and that, that is an option to phase this road in such a way that we get the river crossing and this would, would take care of that traffic. It's causing the problem on 85. If, I am told by Hank and others, it will be, if they started now doing all of the planning and the permitting, it would take about five years to get started on 85. Is that right, Hank?
At the minimum.
At a minimum, he says. And if you did, you're going to be eight to 10 years in construction, which is going to throw a lot of traffic on 74 through Belmont and Cramton and Gastonia, especially if there's an incident, accident or something on the 85 that requires people to detour around it. That's, that's it. And I wanted to get this before you because I've served on this board. There was a committee in 87 and 88 chaired by Commissioner, not Commissioner, at that time, I believe it was Councilman Mickey Price. And I was the, the vice chair of that committee and we had over 40 individuals and I've got a list of all their names. I've got the record of all those meetings that we held back then. I don't throw anything away, Jason. But the, the, the group had public meetings. It was separate from the one back in the 90s or that early meetings that was looking at roads. The, this was one that met and had public hearings across the county and it was pretty much decided at that time where the route ought to occur and we had pretty much agreement. This project ran into trouble, I think, because any time you put a road, you're going to have some people that live along there that don't, don't want to be disturbed. That's just the nature of new construction. I guess it could be compared to the 485 around Charlotte, because I remember them having hearings for years over there. And I guess you could say, well, they didn't need 485, but look at what they have and, but this, this group did that. But when the state started doing their assessment according to federal regulations, they had to consider every possible option of, of a road or build it or not build it. And that was done. And if you remember, some of the routes, it almost looked like a spaghetti line around Gaston County because they were considering everything. And that, that was done and it was finally selected to this, this route, option number nine, I believe it was. And that was, like I say, they had a record of decisions and it was only challenged at the very last minute and, and that's still in the court. Something simmered by this Southern Environmental Law Group, they did the same thing to the Monroe Bypass. And why they choose to do that, I don't know, but that's, that's just the way it happened. And I will take any questions. Anybody got a question? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. I also appreciate your time on the MPO and I do agree, every time you need some information, Commissioner Carpenter can pull it out from 1900. And, and he has it, so. We give him a hard time.
I, I keep too many records. I've got them in my office and, you know, never know when you might need them.
That is true. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. At this time, our next item is other matters. Any other matters from the board? Okay, I have one. The board was emailed two legislative requests sponsored by Commissioner Carpenter that are, that are to be submitted to the NCACC for their 2015-2016 legislative goals process. You should have copies of those requests in your folders. Are there any questions or discussion regarding these items? If not, if it'd be the pleasure of the full board, I'd like to direct the clerk at this time to draft a letter of support to the NCACC in support of these two legislative requests. And the items will be on the 9/23 regular agenda for adoption. One is to support the restoration of state aid funding to public libraries. And the second is public school operating costs to be fully funded by the state.
Goodbye, Mike.
Okay. And at this time, Donna, if you could draft a letter of support to the NCACC in support of those two legislative requests and place those on their regular agenda item for adoption. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aloud.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.